Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 10th, 2020 School Committee Meeting. As always, these meetings are audio and visually recorded. I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Jeff Boe.
Mike Moran.
Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon. Dr. Flanagan is absent tonight. He is quarantining for two weeks due to close contact with somebody with COVID unrelated to the school. He is working from home now.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Costucci.
Anthony Tannarella.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Sharon Fairbanks.
You all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will seek a motion to approve the October 6th, 2020 Executive Session Meeting Minutes, October 7th, 2020 Negotiations Meeting Minutes, October 14th, 2020 Negotiations Meeting Minutes, October 20th, 2020 School Committee Meeting Minutes, and October 29th, 2020 Negotiations Meeting Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0-0. Correspondence? It's not at this time. Share the success. Natalie is not with us tonight. There are no subcommittee updates at this time. Personnel. Jess Monroe, a TES teacher, has requested to extend leave of absence for the remainder of the school year. Christina Landry Turk, a TES teacher, requests to extend leave of absence through January 3rd, 2021. And new hire Jenna Durkin as a TES paraprofessional. Date of hire, November 16th, 2020. Welcome Jenna. New business? Dr. Branko?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to give the committee a brief update on where we are as far as work we have done to assess our current learning model and the state of COVID-19 in general in Tingsborough and the impact it's had on the public schools. And again, just to reiterate that Dr. Flanagan is working from home. We have been in constant contact over the past week or so, putting the presentation together and making sure that everything is as fluid as possible for tonight's presentation. So as you know, we have stuck to our learning model drivers pretty consistently throughout all of the pandemic time. We have focused on prioritizing the health and safety of all of our students and staff, maintaining strict guidance to the recommendations of professionals and experts as detailed by the CDC and DSE guidelines. And we continue to focus on understanding the importance of context and interpreting the data locally to make the best decisions for all 1,600 students in the Tingsborough Public Schools. And I'd like to reiterate that that needs to continue to be our focus tonight as we go through the presentation and as we have discussions, that we make sure we're hyper-focused on these three bullet areas. So our primary goal being driven by context and data, it's important to talk about the importance of returning students and staff to an in-person school experience as soon as possible, but doing that in a safe learning environment while following all of the guidelines that are grounded in science and data. No one in this room tonight wants to put anybody in a position where we're not feeling safe to come back to work or to come into school full-time. And we feel really confident that as long as we're grounded in science and data and having local contextual conversations, we'll be able to do that. So we are not in a rush to make massive upheaval, but we are constantly looking at our data and trying to make sure that we make the best decisions possible so that our learning model can be fluid and grow as the data develops. What you see in front of you is the same chart we're kind of getting used to at this point. This is the latest metrics for Tingsborough. And as Chairman McMahon knows, the state just recently, as of last Friday, has changed the new metric in the system they're using. So our COVID Status Review Team, which is made up of Chairman McMahon, some TTA members, administrative team members, as well as representatives from the Tingsborough Board of Health, look at this data every single week so that we can contextualize the data locally and make sure we're making good decisions in the district for all of our students and staff. And as of last Friday, when they changed the metric, now they consider the average daily incident rate within a community as well as the rate of positivity. These two metrics together determine the color-coded designation. That is a shift from the way that the metrics used to be reported out. So at this time, you'll see that we are currently in the yellow and not in the red based on the new determining factors.
Just for clarity, Dr. Branko, the positivity rate used to be above 5% to trigger a red designation.
Thank you. So this is the public data as has come out. So you can see the dates of notifications that have gone out to the district as updated as recently today. And you can see the cumulative totals over time that to date, we have had a total of 10 reported positive cases within the school community. So on average, that's a very small controlled group. We are thankful to the contact tracing experts in the community who partner with us to make sure that we do that to the best of our ability and as quickly as possible and accurately as possible to make sure that we are able to take care of everybody in the community. But these are the most recent numbers for everyone to see. So when you continue to look at the updated metrics, one of the things that has been abundantly clear coming out of the Governor's Office is that they are now asking districts to really prioritize in-person learning across all of the color-coded categories unless there's suspected in-school transmission. Last Friday, the Governor Baker had his press conference, and if you saw it, he had a good amount of people with him. He had the Secretary of Education, James Peiser, Secretary of Health and Human Services, Mary Lou Sudders, Dr. Mary Beth Mioto, who is the Vice President of the Massachusetts Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, as well as Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley. And the message at that press conference was very consistent, that the hope is as we get more data and get more understanding of the virus within each local community, will we make a push to come back as safely as possible to as much in-person learning as possible? But the message was clear. They use language like "when feasible," "if logistically possible," "to the greatest extent possible." Dr. Mioto also talked about how the viral transmission rates are not lower with students and staff who are working remotely, and they're not seeing a large number of transmissions from children to adults at this time. So those are some of the drivers that are leading the DESC and the Governor's Office to really have school districts try to have good educated conversations about an increase in in-person learning model, if possible, locally. Some of the concerns with not at least looking at these options relate to deeper developmental gaps and the increasing struggles that students and adults are having with social, emotional development and mental health. It is important to talk about the fact that no relief has been provided to us at this time from the state in regard to transportation. So when we talk about the barriers to success, even if we felt comfortable with the data and the medical science, we still have that barrier. We have transportation issues across the state that haven't been dealt with, so that's a real barrier that we have to talk about. The reality that we've scheduled students in cohorts on purpose to minimize interaction, and that is still a necessary precaution for contact tracing purposes and to keep everybody healthy. Remote learning must remain an option for our families who choose this option, as well as for students who are identified as close contacts. Because we have the concurrent learning model going and because we have live-streamed classes, there is some fluidity there where if a child or a staff member winds up close contact and has to go remote, it's been very encouraging that they can stay with their peers, they can stay in their cohort, they can stay in their classes and keep pace to the best of their ability. So we don't want to take that opportunity away. We've set up all of our classroom and operational procedures based on designing six-foot spaces, a certain amount of children in each classroom based on the size of those classrooms. So we've put a lot of time and energy into keeping that model, and we want to make sure that we have time to look at other models if in fact we're asked to do so. And we do have to live within our FY '21 allocated budget. While we have been fortunate to receive some federal funding, that money's not going to be there forever, and we do have to be as fiscal responsible as possible within the community. So this is just to kind of remind us of where we've been in the summer. We held 46 meetings with nine different committees to develop the original draft plan. We worked collaboratively with the TTA to come to an MOA regarding the reopening plan. School Committee supported the motion for the hybrid at that time. And then from September to November to now, we've had revised CDC guidelines multiple times. We've had revised transportation guidelines promised to us and anticipated, but they have yet to come out. And we understand that there's evolving research that talks about the fact that schools are not super-spreaders at this time. So we're trying to contextualize all of those facts to the best of our ability as we discuss our options tonight. If you recall this slide, these were the numbers right when we started the school year around September 14th, based on remote learning, the Lakeview cohort and the Winslow cohorts, and where students were placed by numbers. Since that time, it's important to notice that we've had 74 students move from hybrid to remote. We've also had 16 students move to the four-day-a-week based on prioritizing the needs of those particular students. We've had 19 students move from remote to hybrid. And our homeschool numbers have gone from 14 students last year to around 31 in this particular school year. That's 109 changes, just to put that in perspective, in that short period of time from September to November. Again, I believe that's very fluid. I think it will continue to be fluid, and we believe that that's the beauty of the model that we currently have, where that allows for some fluidity between kids to flow between remote and in-person in the current hybrid model. But it's just important to contextualize that as about 109 changes in a pretty quick and short amount of time. We do anticipate updated guidelines from DSE, MassDPH. We're waiting on transportation. There are discussions, a lot of discussions going on around the Wednesday cleaning protocols and the concept of deep cleaning versus consistent cleaning. And there's a lot of science and a lot of metrics coming out of Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health right now. And Superintendent and I attended a live webinar with Professor Joseph Allen from that institution recently, where they talked a lot about risk reduction strategies. And one of them was just the ongoing cleaning of high-touch services being a repetitive nature as opposed to stopping on Wednesday or whatever day your district happens to choose for that one deep dive. So we've had those conversations with our maintenance and custodial staff about the importance of doing that work, as well as all of the mitigating strategies, wearing the mask six feet apart, constantly washing hands or using hand sanitizer. So all of those put together are what are keeping our community as safe as possible. I think the other piece of contextual data that we have to really lean on that's important is to recognize that we have 245 staff members that come from a total of 43 different towns and cities. And those 43 different towns and cities are not all located in Massachusetts. So while those of us who live and work in Massachusetts are used to one contact tracing mechanism, are used to one set of rules around quarantining, that's not necessarily the case in other states. And so that impacts our workforce dramatically depending where they work and then where they live. And so we are trying to keep an eye on that and work to the best of our ability with all of our staff members to make sure that they and we understand the context around where they live versus where they work. Also, this is just the graphic with the age breakout. You'll see that we have 66% of our staff in that 50 or above category as far as age goes, and we understand that that can be a concern for a percentage of our staff members. So we have rolled out a model to our community, family, and staff that was palatable and understandable as we started the school year, and we'll make sure we continue to have a model that makes everybody feel safe and secure as we move forward. It is important to understand that our families are in different places, comfort level desires for what their students should and shouldn't have for learning opportunity, people working at home, people not working at home, what they do for a living, how many children are in the house. All of these are driving factors really help influence a family's comfort level with what model their child goes into or forces them to go into a specific model. So we know that some families want full remote learning. This continues to be an option. We are aware that some families would like full in-person learning, which is obviously not an option at this point in time. We also know that there are some families out there that may want increased time for in-person learning. It's not yet an option in our current model. And we know that some families are comfortable with our current model. We've committed to this hybrid learning model with an understanding that there'd be a certain amount of children in the classroom, certain parameters from desk to desk within the classroom, and that holds true for our staff members as well. So we want to make sure that when we had conversations originally about people returning to work and returning to school, that any changes we make might be met with a different level of comfort depending on who those people are. We do believe wholeheartedly that in-person instruction cannot be replicated through remote learning. We know what the data says about our younger learners. We know the impact of screen time as we all stare at one tonight. We understand what that does to our social, emotional development and what it does to us psychologically, but we happen to be where we are, but we understand that in-person instruction is really what we're shooting for. We see it in the school-based presentations that our students have given week after week here at the School Committee Meeting. Every student who's come here, when you guys ask them authentically to explain what they like and don't like, to a fault, every student has said they just want to come back more. Whether they missed math, their teachers, their friends, or just the routine of getting out of bed, leaving the house, and coming here, we've heard loud and clearly from those students. So we understand that desire. We are concerned about the time that our youngest learners, particularly pre-K to 1, are spending on Chromebooks or spending in, dare I say, less authentic learning opportunities than they're used to or than potentially should be used in best practice in that age bracket. We know why we're here. We understand we're doing our best work, but we are concerned about that particular age bracket. And ultimately, we're also concerned about the level of progress that some of our students are making when we prioritize our high-need students. So we have a group of students that we are watching very closely in an effort to try to maximize their in-person learning opportunities more or as much as possible or as much as the family is willing to allow at that particular time. So these are all areas that we're looking at very carefully. So as we move forward, we believe that we have to now, once again, understand the family perspective as it relates to increasing in-person learning time. We would like to hear from our community members after, now that we've lived in this model for a few months, we think that's an important piece of data. We've discussed internally the possibility of what it would look like to explore in-person learning time on our Wednesdays for students in grade 2 to 12, and we've started to have internal conversations about what it could look like if we expand our in-person learning time for all students K to 1, five days a week. No planning, no massive thought around that other than very quiet internal preliminary conversations that we would like you to have open discussions about tonight and potentially give us some direction on. We understand the transportation limitations, and we need to explore our options locally in the district. And we want to continue to explore increasing in-person opportunities for our high-need students where that is appropriate. So if asked to take on that charge, some of the next steps we would take would include a family questionnaire, beginning negotiations with the TTA, working with the building-level administrative teams to develop draft plans, and ultimately to establish a timeline for potential implementation or discussion of any possible changes after all of the other work has been done to come back to the School Committee. And I close out this portion of the conversation with just a hyper-focus again on our three major drivers, that we need to continue to contextualize this around prioritizing the health and safety of all of our students and staff, following the recommendations of the professionals and the experts out in the field, and really, really understanding our local data so that we can make the best decision for 1,600 students, their families, and all of the staff to take care of them every day.
Thank you, Dr. Branko. I will seek a motion to take Agenda Item 8. There's comments and questions out of order.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0-0. Do you have any visitors who want to speak? Okay. So we ask that speakers shall identify themselves by name and address prior to commenting. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to present the material at the chair's discretion. This time limit may be extended. All comments shall be addressed through the chair, and the committee will not engage with the speaker or one another in deliberation on comments as they are presented during the public comment period.
So I was pleased by the, oh, I'm sorry. Kim Rao, 16 Michigan Road. I have a 4th grader here, hybrid Winslow, and a 7th grader at the middle school, hybrid Winslow. I was pleased to hear that it sounds like we're still looking at the six-foot distancing because I'm not pro-all remote or pro-all in. I just want that six-foot distancing as much as possible. So then I'm thinking, since so many people have switched their models, I would be okay if there was some sort of lottery to take those spots for people who do want to go longer times, and I wonder if that's something to consider, that if there are now more openings in those classrooms of 12, could there be some way that some students could take advantage of that and fill in those spots to get some families some more in school time?
Thank you, Kim.
Hi, good evening. Not quite as tall as Kim. Liz Antanovic at 8 Nevada Road. I apologize, I was a few minutes late this evening. Is there going to be a vote this evening on the next trimester's learning model?
Yes.
And that, will that be after questions and comments?
Correct.
So it said on, seemed on the slide, the decision has already been made. Was there a meeting prior to this meeting in which you discussed that in-person learning was not an option?
No, that's what this meeting is.
Okay.
If you don't mind me, I think you might be misinterpreting the parentheses. All it says is our current model because nothing has changed. That actually isn't an option right now.
Okay.
So I think you're just misinterpreting the way the parentheses were presented.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I'm not even as tall as her. Debbie Wood, 44 Davis Street. My concerns are, you know, if we're looking at bringing kids back, maybe K through 1 or high-need students, which I assume means children on IAPs, when that's taken into consideration, are you taking into consideration family members as well? Because my concern is, you know, I do have a child on an IEP, and maybe she would be prioritized, or maybe my K through 1, you know, my first grader would be prioritized. But unless they're both in, I can't send either of them due to logistics.
Hi. I'm just going to ask a question. Beth Craig, I live at 99 Norris Road. I'm a resident, but I'm also a teacher at TMS Special Education. I was wondering if we could do a, for the Wednesdays perhaps, like a three-day, two-day, and then a two-day, three-day, only because I have the classroom with some high-needs. Also, I didn't know if the buses were going to be ready to roll. I know that the bus drivers don't work on Wednesday, and I'm sure they might appreciate an increase in their pay. So I wonder if that is something that could be looked at.
I just want to make sure I got the notes right. What is the three-day, two-day?
So I saw the thing about Wednesdays and perhaps with our cohorts, when we could be three-day, two-day, and then two-day, three-day.
Yeah.
And then the buses, of course. Got it.
Thanks, Beth.
Hello. I'm Denise Hamilton, and I'm in 13 Palmer Lane in Salem, New Hampshire. I am a teacher at the high school. And for me moving forward, as someone else has already said, the six-foot rule is very important to me. If we were to permit full-open next trimester, I would have upwards of 27 kids in one of my classes, and I'm in an interior room with no windows and one air purifier. So that would be something that would be very concerning to me in terms of safety.
Anybody else? Thank you, everybody. We will resume our meeting. School committee discussion and vote. So before we get to this, I also want to bring up the Mass Association of School Superintendents released a statement today in response to Governor Baker's statement saying, you know, we should be pushing for full in-person. So the statement reads, "While superintendents have been strong advocates for as much in-school learning as possible, there are several realities which require the Governor's help before many months of planning can be altered. One, convincing evidence that less than six feet of distance is safe. We need medical experts to explicitly coalesce around safe distancing, which allows for increased student capacity in classrooms. Two, school bus transportation must allow for significantly larger student bus capacity. We are limited right now with bus availability and significant cost to expand bus usage. And three, help with collective bargaining provisions since there is no way to make unilateral changes in previous agreements with local unions. Superintendents have already negotiated extensively on return-to-school plans." So the superintendents are aware of the tough situation we're in, and they're asking the Governor to provide clarity and evidence to support his statements. I'll open up to the committee for discussion on plans for trimester two.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I have a statement to read from Rob Mullin, one of our school committee members who was not able to attend tonight. The words forward will be Rob's words, they're not my words. He just said, "Dear fellow school committee members, I apologize for my absence. I greatly wish I could be here personally to express my views on remote learning and in-school learning opportunities, but unfortunately, I'm unable to. I appreciate your indulgence in allowing Rebecca to speak for me using this prepared statement. I completely agree with the Governor of Massachusetts and the Commissioner of Education insofar that in-school learning is the best option for all students. However, the state of Massachusetts and New Hampshire, as well as most of the country, are now experiencing..." Sorry, are you able to hear me? "...are now experiencing rapidly increasing COVID cases, both in adults and children. The Governor has recently enacted more stringent rules on public gatherings and restaurants and out in the open. The New England Patriots have recently announced that there will be no fans in their stands for the remainder of the season, yet there is a push to increase the number of children in school buildings. In their statements of last week, both cited four studies done in other countries to support their claims that children can be returned to school safely. I'm interested in reading these studies, so I did, and I've attached links further down. If you'd like these links, you can reach out to Rob. I'm not a doctor, but I am able to reach and draw to conclusions, so here are a few I highlighted. All the studies are from August to September and are using data from the spring in countries where initial response to the pandemic were much more aggressive than that in the U.S. No updates are included in any of these studies. Number two, the repeated cautions in these studies do not draw too broad of a conclusion to the initial results. Number three, these studies were pediatric in support that many children who do become infected with COVID fail to show any symptoms. Without constant and repeated testing, we may never know if a certain child is infected or be able to trace the infection. And number four, absolutely none of these students of these studies draw the same conclusion that the Governor and the Commissioner have claimed. So yes, students without underlying health issues may not feel any effects of the virus. It would be safe to return in large numbers. However, children are not the only people in the school buildings. Teachers, administrators, and support staff do not have the same abilities to shrug off the effects of this deadly virus. They are at much greater risk of developing short and long-term health issues from contracting the virus. So I will ask all my fellow board members to vote to continue our school options for the next trimester as they are now. Two, one, two, hybrid. And full remote options for parents are the safest and best way for them. Thank you, Robert Mullin."
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Becky. I think I'm really interested in the new proposals for increased in-person learning. I really like the idea of alternating cohorts on Wednesday and picking up an extra day of in-person learning. I don't, as a parent, I don't like the full remote day. I don't think it flows as well. So I like that. I also really like the idea of getting our youngest learners in school full-time because I know several of us toured the schools early on, and those youngest learners are struggling hard trying to be remote. So if we can get them in the buildings, you know, they'll be much better off. off.
I'd like to share my sentiments. I agree with what Ryan has said. I'd like to see our students in the buildings more, but safety is of the utmost importance. If we can get our students to stay within their cohorts, but come in every other Wednesday, that's another day every two weeks that they're in the building. I know, you know, in my family, when my son wakes up on an in-person day, he's really excited to go to school, which is nice and it's refreshing. I don't, we don't like the remote learning days. I've seen it with friends' children, other family members, and remote learning days are more difficult. The full Wednesday remote is, is very difficult. As far as the younger learners, I agree. I'd love to see the younger learners in the building more, if that's what's right for the family. And so I think it's important that we continue to offer these options for families to choose what's right for them, because I can't choose what's right for somebody else's family if they have underlying medical conditions or something to that effect. They need to be able to take that more cautious approach.
Sorry. I'd just like to reiterate what both you said. I agree that trying to get us more in-person would be advantageous, if at all possible. I think for the K-1 students, it's really important. However, everybody's comfort level is different, so there should be, as Becky said, some options if people do not want to go that way. For the Wednesdays, I think that's a great option, to do other, every other Wednesday. I was also thinking, possibly, older children, juniors and seniors that drive, so we don't have a bus issue, that they might be able to go in more if there was room, where they could still maintain the six-foot distancing. That was another option I thought of. But just a step so we can move toward going more in-person in a safe way. And of course, at any point, we could pull back if we needed to. But it, you know, that's our ultimate goal. And I also wanted to ask, have there been any collecting of data about the number of people on the buses? Because we set it up so that there would be place for everybody on the buses. Now, have they been filled, all those spots, or is there a lot of room? Just for data going forward, if we do take a step forward later on down the road, would there be, what, you know, how, how much bus spaces are actually being used? So just...
I don't have the exact numbers. I know we're definitely not at full capacity on the buses. But we still do have to, we have that obligation based on Mass General Law, where we need to hold those seats available in case something changes. So I understand the frustration that, hey, there's only a few kids on the bus, but we can't predict if somebody's home life changes, and they need to send the kids on the bus. And if that happens, we need to be able to accommodate.
Right. So unless that regulation was to change.
Right. And we, we did our due diligence. We contacted our lawyer. We asked a question. We asked about waivers, and we were advised, hold the seats available and don't accept waivers. So I, I think that's kind of the tough situation we're in. There's inconsistent messaging coming from the state. It's, you know, Governor Baker's on TV saying, you know, go full in-person if you're, you know, not in the red. But on the other hand, there's, I haven't seen any strong evidence saying less than six feet is safe, and move forward with that. DESI hasn't changed anything with transportation guidelines. So in effect, nothing's really changed.
Right.
We're still in the same situation we were in, in September. We still have the same restraints as a community, and I don't know how we get around those. So I think it's really important to focus on the options we do have, which is the every other Wednesday, getting the younger students in. We can certainly look at, if there's a way to get other students in, Julie.
Great. And also, children on IEPs, if they can come in more, I think that's important, too.
So I know that's already happening. Sarah and her team does a great job identifying students with needs, and if there's a need for them to be in-person four days a week, that's happening already.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chair, just to touch on two of the things you just said. Transportation's number one. Without transportation, we cannot bring our students back full-time. It's that simple. So until those restrictions are lifted, full-in-person option is off the table. I'd like to see our students back full-time, but also the six-foot distancing, without that, we will have to continue to maintain that in all of our classrooms until that is, those restrictions are released as well. So do we have the busing for pre-K first-grade capabilities right now?
I believe we do.
Full-time?
I believe we do. I believe Dr. Flanagan looked into that, and we can accommodate.
And we won't have a problem with the bus companies if we did a every-other-Wednesday cohort rotation?
Mr. Messina, maybe you can clarify, but it's my understanding we're still paying for that Wednesday, correct?
We, we're still negotiating what, what Wednesdays look like with the bus company. Their Mass General Law basically says you can't pay for a service if it's not rendered. During the beginning of the pandemic, they did give us some relief to talk about transportation readiness with the bus company, but that expired on June 30. There is a bill on the governor's desk to extend that to June of next year. So we still have to talk to the bus company about what Wednesdays look like. However, I have talked to the bus company. They are trying to keep the drivers busy on Wednesdays, cleaning their buses, basically to keep them on payroll, to keep them around, because we don't want to lose the drivers. How much of that we want to pay is a discussion we need to have with the bus company, but I don't foresee any problem with getting the bus drivers back five days a week.
Mr. Chair, I think it's also important just to remind everybody that if we were able to get to a position where we were offering opportunities for K-1 to come back full-in-person, there's a high likelihood that not every single child's family will accept that possibility. So I don't see every, you know, a scenario where every single K-1 student is riding the bus. So I do believe, you know, as Mr. Messina works with the bus company, as they try to keep employees whole, and as we get a better understanding from our families, based on a questionnaire that we can put out at some point sooner than later, we'd get a better understanding of exactly who would say that they want to increase their child.
Thank you. So if we offer full-in-person K through one, the remote option's obviously still there. Does the hybrid option remain?
So right now, we have, we're seeking direction, quite honestly, from the school committee. We haven't done a full deep dive, because we didn't want to task the administrative team with going too far down this road until we've had honest conversations with the school committee, the teachers' union, and the community. So I can't give you a definitive answer. I can tell you that that will be explored. And I do believe what we've heard tonight and what we've heard from some of the board members so far is we want to make sure we're taking care of families and providing options that meet their needs. So that will be important to continue.
Yeah. If we do choose to move down this path, I think it would be important to maintain that hybrid option, because I know some families are comfortable with hybrid, but not necessarily comfortable with full-in-person. Does anybody have any other comments?
I'd like to say... Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was very fortunate today to be able to take a walk. I live fairly close to the school, elementary school, and I was able to take a walk around the building, you know, safe distance, obviously. And it was just really nice to hear the students outside playing, young kids playing. And I think that's really what the, some parents in the community who feel comfortable sending their kids to school are really wanting and desiring from, for their students. It, you could hear the kids laughing, running around. It was just normal noise that you'd expect to hear of kids outside. And I think, as a school committee, we need to encourage where we can. I think the idea of the three-two, two-three, you know, that was brought up tonight, strongly support that. You know, I wish I could, you know, vote 100% to send the kids back five days a week back to normal. We know we're not back to normal right now. The biggest pain point is the busing, as Mr. Gennaro brought up earlier, and of course, Dr. Brinko as well. So I guess I just wanted to say that I think it's important for that whole person that we're developing. In the district, obviously, we're not doing the work. The hard work of the teachers are, you know, developing the students. I think we need to encourage as much as possible that in-person learning wherever we can. And, you know, so I will be supporting the strongest possible measure we can do to support that.
Thank you. I, I think I'm very much in agreement with what's been said so far. I mean, looking at, even looking back at this first trimester with the hybrid model, and, you know, some students in, in full remote, it's, it definitely had its bumps. We had some big bumps, you know, even with things like the, the recent internet challenges. But it's things that everyone has been able to get past and move forward and try to get into as normal a rhythm as possible. And I, I think the, the more we're able to get closer to a real normal, the better off everyone is going to be, from the parents, the teachers, the students. You know, I like, really like the idea of having the younger learners in far more often. Just knowing that it's, it's difficult to have a young one on a Chromebook all day. Knowing that it's not, you know, they're gonna get, they're, they're gonna get bored. They're going to find ways of being distracted and maybe playing with a toy off the side of, of their computer, or something along those lines. It's just not a great setup for them. So if there are ways that we can do that safely, then I think that, that's really a great opportunity to consider. One thing that I'd be curious to ask about, you know, assuming we were to look further into that model, knowing we're going into the winter and that it's very likely we will see an uptick in coronavirus, what mitigating steps would we have potentially in place to make sure that we're staying in lockstep, knowing that, you know, we could find ourselves changing, changing directions quickly?
So we still have the six-foot distancing in all the classrooms. We have air purifiers in all the classrooms in the middle school. Some classrooms have multiple air purifiers now. Still encouraging the hand sanitizer, washing your hands. We're using the cohort model. So there's several mitigating strategies that we're utilizing. And we still have the weekly COVID review team that we spoke about earlier, where we're looking at the numbers every week when they come out. And we're prepared to act quickly in case there's, you know, even the first sign of an outbreak, you know, we would react and take whatever action was appropriate. So if I'm understanding everybody's views correctly, it sounds like we understand the constraints. We all wish we could be full-in-person, but we understand the certain constraints we still can't get around at this point. We are excited about the potential for every other Wednesday and full-in-person for K through one, and we would like the administration to investigate that further. Mark, do you know when our next school committee meeting is? I believe it's December 1st.
December 1st.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
When does the second trimester end?
When does it end? I don't know. It starts November 30th.
The second trimester.
Oh, second trimester.
December 4th?
No.
Of course, it's the second trimester.
Second week of March?
Second week of March.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, second trimester. If we implemented this, whatever changes, I would like, in the motion, that we only implement it to the end of the second trimester, and we will revisit based on CDC and DESI guidelines for the third trimester.
Okay.
Can I, do you mind if I speak to that?
Sure.
Just, I just want to make it clear that we're not necessarily held, any of these decisions and planning aren't tied directly to the organizational structure of our schedule. So you're not, the committee's not bound to give us direction based on the start and end of a trimester. You could pick a span of time.
So to Tony's point, I think we're picking trimesters as a convenient periodic way to reevaluate it. In the meantime, we have the weekly meetings, where if we need to have an emergency meeting to switch, you know, to full remote, we would do that. We wouldn't say, hey, we're locked in for the trimester.
Correct. Well, we're at least giving parents, we're putting the timeframe out there that this is going to be until at least this date, unless...
Unless something drastically changes with COVID numbers. The other point I wanted to make, which is different from the original meeting we had, so when we voted on trimester one, once you committed to remote, you weren't allowed to come back into hybrid. That's changed. The state's changed the rules, so you can go remote, and you can change your mind and come back hybrid. I believe we have two weeks. So...
It's within a reasonable amount of time is the official term.
Okay.
And that is a little different, based on every school in our district.
So if you, if you're remote and you choose to go hybrid, you know, within a few weeks, we should be able to accommodate it. We're required to accommodate it. So it's, you're not locked into remote at this point anymore.
Chair, one more question for you.
Yes.
Maybe more Dr. Brinko. As far as the considerations...
Jeff, can you talk on the mic, please?
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. As, as far as the considerations for the lower grades, is there a reason we're looking at only up through the first grade and not including the second grade as part of the lower elementary school?
Not necessarily yet. I can tell you that we're taking a close look at who's struggling the most, and I can acknowledge publicly that it won't, in my humble opinion, it won't matter where we draw that line. Whoever might be above that line might then say, well, what about us? So I think right now, preliminarily, we've started to talk about K to one. It doesn't mean we have to stop there. I just, I know that that's the data that is most stressing to us right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, if there's no other comments, I would like to seek a motion to start the second trimester in the current hybrid learning model, and to direct the administration to explore expanding in-person learning for all students K through one to five days a week, and expanding in-person learning time on Wednesdays for students in grades two through 12. And the preliminary findings and draft plans to be presented to this committee at our next meeting on December 1st.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Actually, let's do a roll call vote. Stat to my left.
In favor?
Thank you.
In favor?
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
That passes 6-0-0. Thank you. Finance. Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the meeting tonight, seven bill warrants were presented to the committee. I do have them back all signed. The list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in your drive. Also in your drive, Mr. Mullin, as the single signer, came in last week on November 3rd and signed 13 bill warrants. For signing of payroll, in your drive is the list of the last three payrolls, payroll date of October 12th, October 26th, and November 9th, with the warrant numbers and amounts. For the October financial packet, in your drive, there are three reports, your budget at the end of October, as well as a list of the revolving account balances at the end of October, as well as the student accounts. And I'll leave November 1st enrollment to the chair.
Thank you. At the elementary school, we had 743 students. The middle school has 397 students. The high school has 446 students, and there are 22 out-of-district students for a total of 1,608 students, as of November 1st, 2020. School committee discussion. Mr. Bo.
I, I just, you know, as we seem to bring up a lot at these meetings, I just want to say thank you to the teachers, the parents, the admin, and everybody that is involved in making sure that our students are making progress and moving forward, and everyone's been doing the best they can in an imperfect situation. You know, and it's just been a, it's been a pretty solid first trimester. Like we said, we've had some, definitely had some challenges along the way, but everyone is really pulled together to make sure that it was the best possible for all the students.
Just a second. Those comments, I have nothing further to add. Thank you. Thank you. Chair?
I'll echo his comments as well. And another thank you to Mr. Piper and his team for just a great job with this whole D D O S cyber attack and getting us going again. So kudos to you and your group, and thank you.
I just want to reiterate thank you to the teachers. I think I've had the pleasure of watching my child on several occasions in her classes, and I just know how difficult it is to plan any, in a regular model, much less trying to plan two curriculums simultaneously and then negotiate all the different nuances and changes that had to happen during the different internet challenges that we had this semester. And I just want to say thank you very much to the teachers. I know how how hard it's been. And I know they've worked tirelessly to make, to make it happen. So thank you.
I just want to say I'm looking forward to our next meeting where we can discuss the findings from administration on how we may be able to go forward with some of the proposed minor changes. I think that's, it's really important to our students that need those changes, and hopefully we can execute on those.
I'm also, thank you.
So I want to thank the parents who stood up and spoke tonight. We always appreciate it. I thank you to the parents who sent emails over the past couple of weeks. Again, we appreciate it. I also want to speak to the parents who didn't show up tonight, but I know that they're advocating for a full in person. We hear you. We understand your frustration. We're doing our best to move in that direction quickly and as safely as possible. So I know it can be frustrating, and it looks like there's not progress happening, but I want you to know you're not being ignored, and we are doing our best. With that, we do have a need for executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body as declared by the chair. We will return from the executive session only to adjourn the regular session meeting. This action requires a roll call vote. I need a motion now.
I'll make the motion.
Discussion?
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
Passes six zero zero. We are in executive session. Have a good night, everybody.